Anchor location. This meeting will now be held electronically. Members of the press or public are welcome to view this meeting live on YouTube at However, to participate in the public comment period in our scheduled meetings, individuals need to arrange ahead of time to receive passwords, et cetera, to be able to speak for security reasons. With that, we note that we have six members of the council present. Councilman Tom Hune is excused. With that then, we will have our Inside the City video series.
'Twas the night before Christmas, and all through West Valley City, not a creature was stirring, except at the animal shelter.
Yeah kitty kitty.
Police hung their stockings right next to their cuffs, their body worn cameras, and other police stuff. And firefighters were nestled all snug in their beds while visions
Mmm, cake.
danced in their heads. Chief Evans in his uniform and Chief Jacobs with her badge had just sat down to take a look at the CAD.
It looks pretty quiet out there tonight.
When on top of City Hall, there arose such a clatter, the chief called to his fire crew.
Quick, bring the ladder.
Down the pole the team came. They flew like a flash, pulled on their gear.
Don't forget your masks.
Another call to 911.
We've got a report of a fat man in a red suit on the roof.
And to City Hall, officers flew. Quickly they came, their lights flashing red and blue. Police set up a perimeter and then called in SWAT.
We need you guys to get over here and make sure this guy is caught.
The suspect's vehicle, not a car nor a truck, but a red sleigh hauled by reindeer.
Does that look like a buck?
The glare of their floodlights on the new fallen snow gave the lustra of midday to a guy yelling, "Ho, ho, ho." The little old driver so lively and quick, they soon figured out.
Wait, that looks like Saint Nick.
Then call off the SWAT team, call off the dogs.
Our suspect is Santa. Yeah, Santa Claus.
He came bearing gifts, the kind perfect for this year. He fetched a big sack.
Let's see what we have here.
His pack full of masks, sanitizer, PPE, he knew about this year.
He knew just what we needed.
Then as quick as he came, he also left in a hurry. 2020 behind him, quarantine now blurry. And we heard him exclaim as he welcomed 2021.
Merry Christmas to all. Aren't we glad this year's done? Yah!
Okay, well done. Let's see then, next we have, it's rare we have special recognitions and we don't have one tonight either, but we do have minutes from December 15.
Move for approval of those minutes, Mayor?
Second? Somewhere?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any comments? Hearing no further discussion, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection, the vote is unanimous. Minutes approved. Next, we have our public comment period. And so Nicole, how many do we have online tonight?
We have two speakers tonight, Mayor.
Are they both some who have been here before?
No, sir, one of them has not been.
But they did get the information about the maximum time and et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Then with that, Nicole, if you'll bring the first one on?
The first one is Jim Beethock. Jim, you can go ahead and unmute your microphone now.
Good evening, Mayor. Yeah, this is my first time now. First of all, hopefully you guys had a very, very Christmas and a Happy New Year in this all-changing kind of atmosphere we have. One thing I want to commend is Chief Jacobs in her presentation today, and I really loved her pledge of transparency. I wish that Mr. Morris and the Code Enforcement Department would make that same pledge and other departments in West Valley City. You know, complete transparency. I've sent you guys a couple emails about a couple grammar requests, and I'm still waiting for information that should have been readily available if the data was collected. Have a great year. I will be zooming in, I guess it is, on the strategic plan meeting. One other thing is, our parking enforcement guys are swamped, and gal, I forgot about Jenny, they are swamped. And I know a while ago you talked about adding two more, and I know right now in this time of freezing, cutting budgets and all that stuff. But, I mean, these guys are out there running around the whole city and, you know, very, very productive. And so it might be something to talk about in the strategic plan meeting. Other than that, have a great evening. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Rigdon. Mike, you can go ahead and unmute your microphone now.
Hello? Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We hear you just fine.
Okay. A couple things I'd like to talk about. First of all, pertains to the representative that represents my area, and that's Ms. Lane. One of the concerns that I have, and I brought it to one of the engineers that developed the highway, I call 4100 South. And I will acknowledge that the city has done a wonderful job in preparing it, but they forgot to add a couple of things. And they left the status quo of 4100 South Highway as the status quo. I feel that there was not anything done between the area of 4200 West going east, 5400 South going west, to provide adequate health and safety for citizens that live in this area. You've left the status quo as leaving the speed limit at 40 miles an hour, but I believe the health and safety of the residents that live in this area are going to be in near danger because of the speed limit, because there's absolutely no emergency turnoff. If a car was to break down in between these areas, there's nothing indicating where it can pull off unless it pulls off, you know, in a tree and a stop pole. I'm very concerned that there is nothing in between there. If you go east or west of those parameters, there's a bike lane. And I just think that we need to do, Karen Lane, I think we need to do a safety and an analysis of this particular stretch, because in the middle of the day, there's no traffic on that road. In fact, one lane going one way, one lane going the other way would handle the traffic in between nonrush hour times. I'm thinking to be creative is develop a multi-lane for multi-uses between nonrush hour traffic times. Reduce the speed limit for the safety of the citizens that live in this area. And create a multi-lane. I would like to see something, the city engineers, to take a look at Sunnyside Avenue in Salt Lake City. They've created a whole bike lane, traffic lane, and use it as a bike lane or delivering packages. And for people to just deliver things, postal people, people want to exercise, I don't think any thought was put into creating a multi-use lane. One of the things that I'm really embarrassed about is when I go down 35th South, and in the middle of the road of 35th South is this complete mess of misused of space. And it was developed because of some Max. Max wanted to come in and build a bus lane and look at it. You know, you could have been a little bit more creative here. I talked to the engineer, and I'm getting run out of time here, but I really would like to see the city to take affirmative action, because you guys okayed the building of this highway. It is no longer a street. People are going way too fast because it's open. And you need to change that street. The highway belongs on state roads, 35th South, 45th South, 5600 West, those are state roads. But a, but a street is located, and you guys are ultimately responsible for the safety of citizens in West Valley City that have to back out of that street and pull out and everything else. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, I believe Nicole indicated there were no more people online, so with that, we'll turn to a city manager. Any comments for tonight?
No comments, sir, thank you.
To our city council, any additional comments? Hearing none, then we'll move on to our first public, or I guess our only public hearing for the reopening of our fiscal year 2020/2021 budget. And this particular issue, we quarterly do some modifications at least four times a year. If anyone has looked online and the documentation that supports this, they'll see a list of items, rollovers from last year, items that were budgeted, not spent, and rolled over into this year, new grants that have come in that we need to add, and a number of other items for various items that during the year we approve individually, but have to open our budget officially and add them in as part of our overall budget, and we do that quarterly in accordance with requirements. So those are listed there. Some of those are large, but many of them, the large ones, are just rollovers or projects that have been approved and being worked on over time. Perhaps that's enough introduction. Any additional introduction or comments from the council? Okay, then what we will do is we will, as this is a public hearing, we will now open it for public comments. Nicole, are there any people online to make comments on the budget?
Yes, sir, Jim Beethock would like to speak.
Thank you.
Jim, you can go ahead and unmute your microphone.
Thank you again. I appreciate the detailed reports that they're putting out now. It does make it a lot easier to understand. You know, being a businessman, though, I don't under, I still don't understand why some of this isn't put in the front end part of the budget if these are reoccurring things. I understand the golf course, I understand the, you know, the COVID-19 stuff. That, that's all special. But the cars, you buy cars every year, why can't they be put in on the front end of it? And then if you plan too much, well, then that money's back into the thing. You know, just one example like that. But, you know, I do appreciate the detailed reports. It does make it a lot easier than going through all the 21-plus pages of the budget. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And I believe that was the only one that had a comment. So with that then, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council. It's now in the council's purview. I move for approval of ordinance 20-50.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? And I forgot to mention that ordinance number upfront, but thankfully, we still get it in our record. Having no further comments, then we will turn to our city recorder, who will take the roll call vote.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 20-182 to approve the purchase of audiovisual equipment for the Public Safety Building. What happened there when, in our new building, in the interview rooms, which we use, it's not meeting the requirements for interviews and court proceedings, sometimes based upon individuals. It was not picking up all of the information when people were speaking, and it needs to be a complete record. This will authorize the purchase of that equipment. It is for $100,000 from our general fund balance. It was not included in our budget. This was not anticipated. We thought it would be all right, but it's not. And meet now best police practices and allow interviews held there to be held up in a court of law. So we do have more interview rooms, but this is all that we're currently using, so those will be outfitted with it. With that introduction then to the council for further comments or action?
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 20-182.
Second.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 20-183 to approve the purchase of three Ford F-150 trucks from Kengar Ford. These vehicles are for a total of 103,000, excuse me, get the right number there, 104,000, rounded up. And those three were involved in accidents, total losses. We were able to recoup the majority or the money from that, from the responsible party's insurance, so the net here works out well. That is the introduction to the issue to the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution 20-183.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next is Resolution 20-184 to approve the purchase of garbage cans from Wastequip. Obviously, we have these cans available for people to have their garbage picked up. They need to be replaced. Sometimes they break for whatever reasons, and of course, need to get those. Normally, this has fallen in the past under the city manager's authorized limit. We don't look at most of the small contracts and purchases, thank goodness. But in this case, it now exceeds that $30,000, and we order those and have them on hand so we have them available to deliver. There will be a second one of this same thing later in the year. So this is pretty routine stuff. We have to have them, have to replace these cans routinely, and we keep those on hand so, because it, what did it indicate? It was a 16-week delivery period, so we need to have them on hand, because when someone's garbage can breaks or is, something happens and needs to be replaced, they can't wait 16 weeks. Anyway, that's enough introduction there to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 20-184.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, we go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The agenda for our regular meeting is completed. We will have three additional meetings where the council serves as the board for those, the Housing Authority, Redevelopment Agency, and Municipal Building Authority. And then we will hold a closed session after that, that was scheduled for earlier but had to be delayed just time-wise. So stay tuned for additional actions. They will be short meetings. Well, the three of them will, not sure about the closed session, but just so people are aware, we will close it for the purpose of a review of our pending litigation and also for review of character of, what is that? What's the right term there, Wayne?
Professional competency, Mayor.
Professional competency, sorry about that.
No problem.
Just so people are aware, and we will, I guess with that, we will treat that as it has been scheduled as a separate meeting. Is that correct, Wayne?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will hold that as a separate meeting, so don't need to do that of adjourning and then going into that. So with that, just a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Then with that, without objection, we will stand adjourned from our regular city council meeting. Hearing no objections, I rule it passed unanimously. We are adjourned for our regular meeting. Okay.
We have the Redevelopment Agency, Chairman Christensen?
Call to order the annual meeting of the Redevelopment Agency. Conceded that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at And with that, we'll move to the approval of our
So moved. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that our minutes of December 15th be approved. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will accept them as approved unanimously. Is there any report from our chief executive officer, Mr. Pyle?
None necessary tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our new business, the election of our officers for the coming year. Mr. Chair, I nominate Karen Lang to serve as the chair for the year 2021.
I nominate Steve Buhler as vice chair for 2021.
I second both nominations.
Okay, it is now before us. Do we need a roll call vote for this, Ms. Kamek, or just a voice vote?
Just a voice vote, great, sir, thank you.
Okay, we'll kind of do the same as we do with our minutes. If there is any objection to Member Lang serving as chairman the coming year and Member Buhler serving as vice chair, please make it known. Hearing no opposition, we'll go ahead and accept them as chair and vice chair for the coming year unanimously. One final agenda I
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Call to order the annual electronic meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority. And note that pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at To participate in the public comment or schedule public hearings, persons must register in advance earlier this afternoon. So we have had an opening ceremony. Roll call will show that Mr. Tom Hune is excused, all other members are present, and we do have minutes to review and approve dating from June 16th, 2020 special meeting. Move to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or dissent to the motion to approve? Hearing none, the minutes will be considered approved unanimously. Mr. Pyle, any report of the executive director?
No, sir, thank you.
We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, which is the reopening of the fiscal year 2019/2020 budget. Ms. Kamek, is there anyone that is prepared or signed up to speak in the public hearing?
No, sir.
Then we'll bring that matter to the council, which includes Resolution 20-06 or to the authority. Any comment or a motion on Resolution 20-06, the 2019/2020 budget? Move to approve the Resolution twenty dash oh six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Kamek, would you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pete Fitzsimmonu.
Hi.
Ms. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow.
Hi.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Chairman Buhler.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have new business to elect a chair for twenty twenty-one and a vice chair for twenty twenty-one. We'll accept nominations.
Mr. Chair, I would move for Tom Hune to be the chair and Lars Nordfeld to be the vice chair of the Housing Authority.
I will second both nominations. Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, are there any objections to Tom Hune being elected chair and Lars Nordfeld being elected vice chair for twenty twenty-one? Hearing none, we will consider the vote unanimous in the affirmative. And that concludes our business, and we would entertain a moment or a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else the members wish to address.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. With no objection, we'll consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Call to order our annual building authority meeting. And we'll read this statement. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID nineteen pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic rep, pre, the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at WVCTV. All right, note that we've had an opening ceremony and that all members are present except for Mr. Hune. Our next item is the approval of the minutes of June second twenty twenty.
Move for approval of the minutes from June second, twenty twenty?
Second.
We've had a motion to approve and a second for the minutes. Without objection, the minutes are approved unanimously. Any report from Mr. Pyle, our chief executive officer?
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, our next item of business is the election of officers for this year. We'll entertain a nomination.
Mr. Chair, I move for the chair to be Jake Fitzsimmonu and vice chair Don Christensen.
Second both nominations.
Thank you. Not hearing any other nominations or comments, so without objection, we'll accept those two officers as nominated to to those positions. Without objection, then, that that's approved. One more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
For adjourning, do we need to sign out and get back in for the other meeting?
Yes.
Do we need to have a vote to have a closed session?
Yes, sir. I think we should probably move to go into closed session. Okay, so I'll change my.
Go ahead.
I'll let you go ahead.
Before adjourning, then, let's move to hold a closed session following this meeting to discuss pending litigation and personal competence.
Second.
Nicole, are we all in order on this? Is this the right thing to be doing?
This should, this should work just fine, and you guys should have received the calendar invite for the closed session, so we'll close this and just reopen that one.
Right. Any objection to going to a closed meeting? We don't need a roll call vote, do we?
No, it just has to be a super majority, so as long as there's no no's, we're okay.
Without objection, then, we will, after we adjourn this meeting, we'll reconvene in a closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and professional competency. All right, so we had a motion to adjourn. Any discussion or comments? Then we stand adjourned.